Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 15th meeting, Evan and Monroe County Public Library, Board of Trustees. And to be in the meeting, we'll just go around and introduce ourselves and if we care to, share something we are reading, listening to, or playing. So, Chris, we'll start with you.
And I'm reading Happiness by Amanita Forna. And I just finished listening to Sky Full of Elephants by Sebo Campbell.
I am Kari Essery, and for the first time, I'm listening to an audiobook. Big move for me, oh, boy. It's called Remarkably Bright Creatures by Shelby Van Pelt. A little bit about octopuses.
Oh, my goodness. That is literally the book I just finished. Yeah. I just finished Remarkably Bright Creatures, which I really enjoyed. Are you enjoying it?
I'm loving it a lot.
Yeah, and I'm getting ready to start a recommendation called wager about a ship mutiny.
All right. I'm Greer Carson. I'm reading Move On Up: Chicago Soul Music and Black Cultural Power by Erin Cohen. And my family is playing Astro Bot for the PS5, which I cannot recommend enough.
My name is Chris Harrison, and I am currently reading Death in Door County by Annalise Ryan.
I'm Michelle Whitney Wash, and I'm reading or listening to Don't Label Me by Irsad Amanji.
I'm Amy O'Shaughnessy, and I'm reading The Gunkel, which was recommended to me by a friend by Stephen Rowley. It's good.
Okay. All right. So we'll begin this evening by approving the consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December meeting, the monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, personal report, and the board meeting calendar? Any questions or comments?
I have one minor correction on the Director's Report highlights first bullet point in the minutes. It should read November saw the highest number of unique Hoopla users in 2024, not December.
And I just kind of wanted to point out in the budget things, it's interesting to see in the vast 16 years that we're spending 98% of our budget now. But you know, that's good taxpayer money being spent on the new branch.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's a plus. So that's wonderful.
Seeing no other questions or comments, do we, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll have the Director's Monthly Report from Greer.
Okay, so we have added board games and puzzles to our Library of Things collection based in part on patron requests. We've also added a new digital periodicals resource called Press Reader, which offers thousands of titles, including many non-English language publications. The report includes a high-level view of year-end total circulation stats for 2024. Overall, we saw a slight increase in total circulation. That's physical and digital items checked out by MCL patrons. Not surprisingly, circulation of physical materials continues its downward trend, albeit very gradually, while circulation of digital materials continues to increase. Keep in mind that the December 2024 graph is the last time we'll see the pre-COVID-era circulation stats in the monthly Director's Report, as we typically keep about five years' worth of circulation stats in this graph for comparison purposes and to keep it somewhat legible. We, of course, can always look at historical circulation stats any time. We've gotten used to seeing that towering circulation line from 2019 casting a shadow over the subsequent five years, and to see the slow return of an eventual plateau of those CIRC numbers as of this last year. But it's also interesting to note how digital CIRC has pretty much done the opposite, and that 2024 was overall our most successful digital circulation year on record. This has also been a gradual and predictable trend, but many public libraries that I talk to share our view that 2020 marked something of a turning point for public library patrons becoming more fully engaged with digital collections, and those circulation numbers continue to increase. We are proud to once again be the recipients of the 2024 Wall Foundation grant. This time, we'll be using these funds to acquire new gaming computers and a new VR headset for our downtown teen space. We hosted a number of visitors interested in touring our Level Up Digital Creativity Space last month, including peer libraries looking to create their own digital creativity spaces, and IU students of both library science and architecture studying public spaces which focus on creativity. As our Level Up space is now 10 years old, we'll soon be working on space improvements and resource enhancements, part of strategic goal number three, to create and maintain unique and welcoming spaces for our patrons. 2024 saw a significant increase in seed library borrowing from 11,330 packets in 2023 to 14,101 packets borrowed in 2024. And thanks are due to Adult Services Librarian Maggie Hutt for her exceptional leadership in managing and promoting this collection. 2024 also saw patrons making great use of our mall collection. That's the Mobility AIDS Lending Library, which is a collection of mobility aids we offer patrons by way of a partnership with the mall program itself and the Bloomington Council for Community Accessibility. In addition to dozens of walkers, crutches, and other mobility devices, mall patrons borrowed no fewer than 64 rolators in 2024. We're continuing planned improvements to staff workspaces. Our circulation services main sort room area here at the downtown library is getting new shelving, new countertops, workstations, and storage solutions. Following that project, we'll start making improvements to the Ellisville Branch staff workspace, and after that, we'll tackle the downtown Adult Services mezzanine staff workspace. We have also completed a minor facelift to the third-floor administrative office area and public reception lobby. The goal has been to provide some aesthetic updates and digital signage opportunities to the public library, or lobby, sorry, and to create a more staff lounge atmosphere for the admin office area itself. And so we're hosting a small open house for staff this Friday to come upstairs and see the new look and enjoy some coffee and baked goods with us. And finally, Josh Wolfe and I enjoyed distributing staff holiday gifts once again last month as we took bags out to Ellisville and Southwest, while Staff Association President and Adult Services Librarian Emily Bedwell led the distribution of staff gifts here at the downtown library. Happy to answer any questions about the Director's Report.
I have a question about what we get from so as we're adding more checkouts for puzzles and things like that. How is the kitchen kit? Did it stop because the Southwest kind of stopped for a bit, or is that still?
The baking kits, is that what you're talking about? I'll have to double-check. I think we discontinued those just due to lack of sustained interest, but I will double-check. I don't think we have those. Is that correct, Josh? Do you know?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, the baking kits were something that came out of an annual innovation grant proposed by staff. I think we had four kits for a while, saw a little bit of use, and then it kind of tapered off, so, yeah.
So the VR headsets, are those only for teens, or can adults use them?
They'll be just in the space, so it's in-house use, not something that people check out.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
We'll get there one day, I'm sure, but...
Well, that would be vastly popular, I'm assuming.
Yes.
And then my other question was, in the Level Up with the 3D printers, are those the same type of material in each of them, or do we have one that's like, I know there's different types of material you can use for 3D printers, and I can't remember what type of material that is, but what do ours do?
A lot of what we use are plastic materials, but I can double-check and see what else we offer, yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious. My family's gotten into D and D, and everyone wants a...
Printing figurines?
Yes, of course.
A lot of teens like to do that, yeah.
I had just a comment about a couple of resources that you had highlighted in the packet that we added in December to the library. For example, Press Reader, which, just as a member of the community, I just want to say thank you for giving access to more information. At this time, I think that's needed more than ever, a way to get reliable information about what's happening in current events. And the other one, which I'm not sure how to pronounce...
Lode.
Lode, do you say lodey for kids?
I'm not sure if it's lodey or lo for kids.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's really great. And I just wondered what type of outreach we're doing to our community partners to let them know, for example, like the World Languages and MCCSC, or, you know, refugee, what, many spaces that we have here in town where people are moving and...
Churches are hosting refugees.
Yeah, churches. I just wondered what type of outreach we've done with community partners for that resource.
I will talk to Lisa Champelli and Tori Longham to get some details on that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's what they typically do when we get together and decide to launch a new digital resources, figure out who are the key user groups, who are the key community partners we want to make aware of something, and then...
Yeah, I thought that was a really great resource for us.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Kudos to the people that thought to get them, right? And I like the idea that it could both Spanish, the Spanish, Spanish.
Spain, Spanish, and then Latino Spanish. That was excellent as well.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the old business section. And the first item under old business is a resolution to transfer funds to the rainy day fund. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Second.
And we're going to hear from Gary about this.
And the transfer to the rainy day fund this year will be the amount of the operating fund surplus, which was $803,117. And this will put the balance in the rainy day fund at a little over $2 million.
Do we have any questions or comments for Gary? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution to move $803,117 from the operating fund to the rainy day fund signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. And next, we have a motion to approve moving some funds, to transfer operating funds from one category to another. So the first one is to move $100,000 from the capital outlay category to the wages and benefit category, and the second is to move other services and charges, $400,000 from other services and charges category to the wages and benefits. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Okay. And Gary's going to explain that as well.
So when we did the original budget, we had four major categories, and the budget numbers are an estimate. And as Kari said, we ended up using 98% of the budget this year. So it turns out that the category for wages and benefits didn't have enough allocated, and the categories for capital outlay and other services and charges, we had some leftover allocation, which we can transfer into the wages and benefits category. This is just a step that the State Board of Accounts wants us to go through whenever we have a situation like this, where actual spending for the year in the major categories, if those allocations need to be adjusted, this is the way we have to do it.
Any questions or comments?
For the wages and benefits, did increase to the wages and benefits mostly tied to additional staff at the Southwest Branch?
Yes.
Or what?
Yeah. You're welcome.
All those in favor of approving the motion to, the resolution to transfer operating funds signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. And next, we have a resolution to transfer program funds between restricted categories. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
And Gary will explain this.
Okay. So we will get the annual gift from the Friends of the Library over the course of this year, and a portion of that gift is from endowed scholarships. And some of those endowed scholarships are supporting some of the programs that we have in our restricted gift fund. So these programs that you see, it's on page 98, the programs you see there are the ones in the restricted gift category that the endowed funds are supporting. So we're moving $11,950.32 from the Friends of the Library gift fund to the restricted gift fund. And are there any questions?
Restricted gift, will you say it?
Well, yes. But so, for example, the first one there, the Coon Fund, Friends of the Library for Indiana Room Business Periodicals, and Indiana Room Collection Digitization. So that is the restriction.
Oh.
Yeah. So we can use those funds, but we, in this case, it's just for that restriction.
And so this measure is to move the funds from the Friends of the Library over into the operating restricted funds for libraries' accounts?
It's the restricted gift fund, and so there are other restricted gifts in there besides these, but it's just a separate fund from the operating fund. And, yeah, we're moving from the Friends of the Library gift fund, those programs, and then we're moving these into the restricted gift fund.
Gotcha. And the Friends of the Library then manages those endowed accounts, that then this is the interest, this is the annual interest from those accounts?
Yes, that's right. They, we, there's a worksheet done to keep track of each one of these endowed funds and how much of the earnings for the Friends investment account is, what portion is attached to each one, and so, yep.
And so this is the annual rollup? For instance, that 550165 is the annual earnings from that specific Coon Fund?
Well, it's complicated, but close. So what they do, they have a formula where they go back and they take earnings for, like, the past three years, and then average it.
Average, okay.
So it's a little more complicated, but it's basically what you're saying.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the resolution to transfer program funds between restricted categories signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to new business, and we still get to hear from Gary. We have a resolution to surplus an item, which is a display case, I believe. Yes, a display case in the administration area.
It's the large glass display case that sat in between the two elevator doors when you get up on the third floor. As we've been doing the facelift to the public lobby area up there, we have a new way of displaying all of our awards. That display case is very, very difficult to move, and so finding someone in the community who wants it and then getting it to them is kind of problematic. So what we're looking to do is actually sell it through the bookstore, kind of best offer sort of situation, and so that's why we want to surplus it.
Hopefully, they'll pick it up.
I guess we can sell it to the bookstore?
Yeah, we're going to have it outside of the bookstore for a period of time, then see if anybody wants it, you know?
What can you be, I mean, getting it out of the building?
Yes, putting it in a truck, trying to get it across town without it breaking, all that fun stuff, so, yeah.
Smart.
It's a glass.
Yep, lots of glass, yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve this resolution to surplus the display case?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution to surplus the display case item signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. And next, we have our slate of officer nominations for the upcoming year. We will have some changes to the board, as there are two officers that are stepping down from the board. Kari, her term is up, and she is our treasurer, so she will be stepping down from the board after 16 years, which is very exciting for her. She's been a tremendous asset to the board, and we will miss her greatly. And I am also stepping down from the board, so we will be seeking a new president. And do we have a motion to approve a new slate of officers for, oh, no, we're not voting on it, that's right, I'm sorry. Do we have a slate of officers to discuss, or do we have nominations for president? I believe Jamie has offered to do the job, so is there anybody else who...
That's a natural progression. Yeah. Love that.
Okay. And do we have a vice presidential nomination?
I'm going to nominate Kathy to be vice president.
Okay. And then do we have a nomination for treasurer?
Was that a no, or?
I don't know if I can nominate, but I nominate...
Amy O'Shaughnessy.
I would second that.
And we have a nomination for secretary. All right, so our slate of candidates, of officers that will be voted on next month will be Jamie Burkhart as president, Kathy Lozier as vice president, Chris Hull as secretary, and Amy O'Shaughnessy as treasurer. All right. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. All right, and next up, we have some goodbyes to say to Kari. So, Kari?
Thank you. So, we have just a little gift from the library and the board. Let me make sure I look at proper tags here. So, Chris, we just want to say thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. And Kari, a little something from library and board. We know you have a big upcoming trip, so we tried to keep that in mind.
Oh, mine. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you both.
It's been a joy and just an honor to do this.
I agree.
So, thank you.
Yes. It's been a very enriching and rewarding experience, and I will definitely miss hearing about all the new things in the library. I have to do a better job of keeping abreast otherwise, so, but thank you.
We could be you doing public comment.
We...
I'm sure you've heard enough of my comments for the past eight years, so...
Kari, join us by Zoom? Oh, boy. Watch Cats? Kari, where are you traveling to? We're going to Antarctica in February. So it's kind of a...
Right. So, it's kind of a big...
I saw MCL has sweatpants. Available for staff, so I hope that in your retirement and your travels to Antarctica...
The whole works. Well, hey.
Stance and representation in that context.
MCL, down at the...
We don't have any MCL marketing in Antarctica.
In Antarctica.
That'd be great.
See if it works out.
Yeah, that's right.
Was this like a lifelong drink? Like, why Antarctica?
You can ask my husband right over there.
I have two friends who are there right now. Lifelong drink? Okay, wonderful, I love that. The drink is not the shaped drink.
We have medicine for that.
Oh, boy.
Because it's supposed to be a very rough, like the roughest sea passage in the world, so...
Dangerous. Can't wait to hear about it. Hopefully, your captain will... I get a technical.
Yep, we're optimistic.
Yeah.
Do we have anyone online? I do. I did message them, so we do have someone online, cats.
We have no department updates tonight, so...
I'm looking forward to it. Soon as this is over, I'll... It's hearing the Q and A. We need to see if she has a question.
No question? Okay. All right, any members of the public here tonight?
I have one quick follow-up comment. Clarification on your question, Chris. Josh took a look. We do still have those four baking kits in circulation. I'm not sure what the CIRC numbers are, so we're going to take a look at that, but they are still available. Yeah. Must have been another Library of Things collection that we got rid of, yeah.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve, to adjourn our meeting for this evening?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye? Aye. Any oppose, nay? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
We'd like to you both. Yeah, so this is not a big problem.
I'd like to call to order the Board of Finance meeting for the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees for 2025. And the first item on the agenda is the election of president and secretary of the Board of Finance. Usually, it is customary to just use the president and treasurer that are currently in office, so that would still be myself and Chris, or Chris, right? No, Kari, treasurer.
Is it the secretary?
Secretary, oh, secretary, yep, secretary, sorry. So, myself and Chris. So, do we have a motion to approve Chris Harrison and Chris Hull as president and secretary of Board of Finance, respectively?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the president and secretary of the Board of Finance being Chris Harrison and Chris Hull, respectively, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Okay, and then Gary is going to give us a review of the investment report and policy.
So Indiana Code requires each local Board of Finance to have an annual meeting in January. This meeting provides an opportunity to review the library's investment policy and the investment report, and go over finance plans for the upcoming year. 2024 was a year of larger-than-normal increases in both operating fund expenses and revenue. Operating costs for 2022, the last full year before Southwest Branch operations started, so for 2022, operation costs were about $9.4 million for the year. For 2024, the cost increased to about $11.2 million a year, so that's an increase of about $1.8 million since 2022. And in that same period, operating revenues went from about $10.5 million to about $12 million in 2024. Prior to year-end, we were estimating an operating surplus for the year to be in the range of $400,000 to $800,000. And the actual 2024 operating surplus was $803,117. The third page in the Board of Finance report is the balance sheet that shows the cash balance by bank and by fund. The total cash balance at the end of 2024 for all the funds was about $8,630,000, an increase from the cash balance at the beginning of the year by about $660,000. So most of the library's cash is at First Financial Bank, where we have a checking account and a money market account earning interest at 4% per year. The balance in the money market account at the end of the year was about $7.8 million. Interest earnings for 2024 on the money market account funds was about $226,000. After the 2024 operating surplus is transferred to the rainy day fund, the balance in the rainy day fund will be about $244,000. This balance will hopefully continue to grow. As the balance grows, we'll be looking at options for future service expansion. So what might a future service expansion look like to MCL? To answer that, we can look at trends in population for the county, and we can look at revenue trends for the library since 2010. The 2010 population for the county, according to the census, was 138,574. So 10 years later, the 2020 population was 139... So 10 years later, the 2020 population was 139,718. So an increase of about 1,200. And then the current population is reported to be about $139,000. So really, since 2010, there has not been much increase in population in the county. The 2010, so, so now we're talking about the revenue trend. The 2010 operating revenue was about $8.1 million. The 2024 operating revenue was about $12 million. So that's a substantial increase in 14 years. The library tax was about 11 cents per $100 of assessed value in 2010. For 2025, that rate will be 7.93 cents. So the tax rate drop is due to the rate of increase in assessed value being higher than the rate of library property tax revenue increase, which is limited by the growth quotient. So we'll see a similar pattern. Or the question is, will we see a similar pattern for population and library revenue in the next 14 years? The 20-year Southwest Branch construction bond that was issued in 2021 will be paid off in 2041. So if trends in assessed value and library revenue continue as they have since 2010 and if population increases, it would be financially feasible to add a service location when the 20-year branch bond is paid off in 2041. On the second page of the Board of Finance report, I have presented an option for the next bond renewal in 2027. We could do a seven-year bond in 2027 and another seven-year bond in 2034. That would get us to the 2041, when the current branch bond will be paid off. And at that point, we could possibly be ready to build another service location. And then page four in the report is the operating surplus analysis report. This report shows the actual revenue and operating cost trends from 19, from 2019 to the present. And then an estimate for revenue and operating cost for 2025 and 2026. And then the final report in the packet is the investment policy. And we have not made any changes to that policy since last year. And at this point, I'll open it up for any questions there might be. For now, with the money market account paying 4%, we are not looking for other ways to invest that to try to get a better rate. In the past, we have used certificates of deposit. But that requires tying up the money for a year or more. And because of the way our, we get a, a big chunk of revenue in January, but then by July, it's spent down pretty, pretty low. So that's why the certificates of deposits don't work out so well now.
Any other questions or comments for Gary?
I would love a reminder about the growth quotient. So the difference in the assessed tax rate, I mean, that's a significant difference of 11 cents per $100 in 2010 versus 2025 will be 7.93. Can you remind us of what that growth quotient, like who sets that, how that is determined?
Yes.
That would be great to have a refresher. Thank you.
Yes, so it's based on the total personal income for all Indiana residents. So they take a six-year average. So for the year ending 2023, so we would go back 23, 22, 21, anyway, back six years. And they look at the increase from one year to the next. And then they average that, that for each year, then they, they add up the increases and get an average increase for the six years. In the, in the past, that was the number. But a couple of years ago, two years ago, when we did that calculation, it came out to over 4%. It's like maybe close to 5%. And at that point, they said, we're going to cap it at 4%. And so as we go forward, if the increase each year is a smaller amount, we may get back to using that formula. But if we continue with it being over 4%, they'll probably keep that limit in place.
Did you say they? Who's the they?
State Budget Agency.
As I look at, you know, what the statute is and the Indiana Code and knowing that the future bonds and talking about that and the timing is, since we're future hypothetical, why is that included?
I, I guess, just to show, or I guess, answer the question before it comes up. You know, 2027 will be here fast. So next, next year, we're going to be doing the 2027 budget. And, and then during 2026, we're going to be doing bond planning. And so I want to get this out so that everybody can consider, what is the long-term plan?
So my next question then is, putting this in here doesn't make us committed to doing so?
Exactly. You're, that's right. This is just if population and revenue trends continue their growth, we would be in a position. But we have tons of flexibility. If, if something weird happens and population starts to go down, we're not committed.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great questions. Any others?
So looking at a potential, like, east branch construction, if I, as a relatively new Bloomington resident, look at where the expansion of population is, I would say generally, it's not necessarily on the east side. It's tending to be more on the south side, which I'm sure is related to the, the last branch creation. But probably continues to expand to the west and south more than to the east. So is there a reason that the library is considering an east branch versus any other location in the metro area?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I'll start by saying this is very hypothetical. And just kind of, let's think about what library presence and service needs to look like long-term. We have a conspicuous gap in physical service on the east side, outside of our outreach services program. And so that's kind of always been the possible next step in our thinking if we want another physical location of some kind. And it doesn't necessarily mean it would be an additional branch. It might be a storefront. It might be something different. That's an area we would want to look at. There's also, there have been property opportunities on the east side that are attractive in terms of considering a physical library presence. So we've been thinking in those terms. But as Gary said, it's not at all a commitment to we're building an east-side branch or anything like that. It's just the area of the community where we don't have any real physical presence.
Yeah.
That's about, that's it, really. Yeah. One of the biggest pieces, one of the biggest pieces to actually building solid plans for any future construction or expansion of our presence and service would be community feedback. So needless to say, a big strategic plan, probably multiple strategic plans that focus on community input as to what everybody needs, where they want to see us and so on, would be the real driving factor in figuring out, are we going to have an east-side presence? Are we going to be somewhere else within the county even? So that's not something that's happening right now. But our preliminary thinking about this is east side would be a good place to consider if we were going to expand our presence.
Well, there's multiple reasons to list it here, but it is helpful to just show your work too for the board's information of, you know, what we could potentially see years from now. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion to, to approve the adjournment of our Board of Finance meeting? All those in favor of adjourning the Board of Finance meeting signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.